Recording in progress.
All right, it is six thirty-seven. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Madras City Council to order. Can we get a roll call, please? Mary Lapine is excused. Counselor Townsend?
Present.
Counselor Sebold is excused. Counselor Spencer is excused. Counselor Solis?
Present.
Counselor Yoder?
Present.
Counselor Walker?
Present.
You have a call. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, are, is there anybody in the public that would like to make comments on something not related to our existing agenda? Anybody online? Thank you, Fatma. All right, moving on, we do have some amendments to our agenda. Sounds like after visitor presentations, we're going of the public hearing for Madras, City of Madras Comprehensive Plan and Development Code to implement the maximum residential density standard. That's gonna be an addition. We'll have a public hearing there. And then after, as line item seven, we're gonna add the approval of the lease of four twenty twenty-five Ford interceptor police SUVs that we will also discuss. Is that the only changes? Okay, so I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the changes stated.
I move that we accept the regular agenda with the stated amendments.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will then entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I do have one comment on the consent agenda. City vouchers are on here. Historically, we've had those as a separate line item specifically because Counselor Walker has to recuse himself from voting on the vouchers. So I don't know if we want to move this from the consent agenda so Gary is able to vote, or if you want to just recuse yourself from the entirety of the consent agenda for this meeting.
No, I would prefer it was modified so that I don't have to vote on it.
Okay, then I propose we remove item number five, city vouchers for January twenty twenty-four from the city council consent agenda and make it a regular agenda item.
Can we move it to the regular agenda right now, or do you wanna wait till the next meeting and adopt it there? Okay, got it. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, uh, any opposed? All right, so we're gonna move city vouchers then down to, I guess, eight. I'm gonna move it down to number eight. Okay, it looks like visitor presentations. Um, we do have a presentation from our chamber directorly, director with her monthly update. Please state your name.
Good evening. Debbie Taylor, Executive Director for the Madras Jefferson County Chamber of Commerce. So can you believe it's week eight? I stood in here before on day one, so it has gone very quickly. So just wanna give you an update that I am working right now to center the chamber, focus on things here in Jefferson County. That includes filtering emails, subscriptions, memberships, things that aren't really pertaining to us in Jefferson County. And with that, making sure that we're focusing the chamber, that we should be the hub of information and events, um, be the hub of tourism and economic development. So, you know, I'm filtering phone calls, people coming in the door, doing all the things um, for that, people asking, you know, I'm looking for an event space, I'm looking for phone numbers for this place or that place, maps, information. So business is continuing in what we're doing, but just wanna be that hub of information for our community. Um, wanted to give you an update that our finances and our bookkeeping are up to date, and I will be receiving a new profit and loss and balance statement um, from our bookkeeper this week, just so I have one that's outdated, but we're getting, we're getting there. So I just wanna let you know that. I know that's been a concern in the past. Um, we're continuing our Friday morning networking of coffee cuppers from eight to nine AM in the mornings, so you're all welcome to come. Such a long commute on Friday at AM across the street. The Forest Service will be our host for that, and we're gonna house that at the chamber. So we do our Friday morning networking, we have our monthly business after hours, and then if you saw that um, announcement that came out with the Madras Pioneer that we just did a ribbon cutting for Three Peaks CrossFit as well. So those are the things that we are continuing to do. Um, I had been invited thanks to Rick Allen to be part of Cliff Benz's visitation here um, at the fire hall, so just listening in on the information that's being presented there. We are working to rebrand the chamber. We have a new logo, just freshly approved. I didn't bring a bazillion copies, but I do have new copies of um, what it's going to look like. So I have one that will eventually be a decal that will be for businesses to show in their window, or however they'd like to display that. Um, but I can leave those for you if you would like to take a look, but that is the direction we are going. Um, with that, rebranding also comes a styling guide, making sure that the phones are answered properly, information listed on emails, um, all of that. And that's translating over to the website. Yes, I'm aware the website needs to be redone. I am working to get um, someone with us who can get us to the level that we need to be, so get that updated. And part of that includes um, getting our calendar that is on the website updated to include not just only chamber events, but also events within the community. So if you've taken a look at that, orange at the moment is any chamber event, and gray is anything that's happening within the community. So I'm getting, mining that information as much as I can. If something comes to me um, in an email, or a PDF, or I see it on somebody else's social media, I'm getting that information correct. So we have had phone calls where people ask, we're looking to do this event, what else is happening? Well, to me, that information should be available to you on the website so that you can find that. So I just um, sent out an email today. I'm doing a call of the calendars. I know, catchy title, right? I wanna get our community leaders together so that it's not just Debbie that holds this spreadsheet of everything that happens within the community, um, but the fact that I know what's happening at the library, I know what's happening at the MAC, I know what's happening at the fairgrounds. I think that information needs to be put in one place. I'm not gonna take the place of somebody else's advertisement, but making that centralized so people can find that information. So that's happening as well. Um, if you haven't already heard the information, our admin assistant has resigned and stepped away from the chamber. So we will be looking for a part-time front desk person. Um, twenty hours a week is what we're looking for, just to alleviate a bit of what comes in the door, emails, phone calls, because I am doing all the things, but I am only one person right now. So um, that is something that we're working towards now, and that posting will get out here shortly. But that's going to be a temporary position until we're to a place where we're ready to hire a full-time person again with our needs. In, in two weeks, I'll be attending the Governor's Conference on Tourism in Salem. That was a recommendation to me from other chambers and other counties, saying that's a really important opportunity to go to, so I'll be attending that. I have been part of the Visit Central Oregon Destination Management Studio Steering Committee. Um, so I'm with a lot of people throughout Central Oregon who are making conversations. Um, I was a little stressed at that meeting because they had the large sticky notes all over the walls, and I had a lot of cities that I needed to cover in a lot of areas. Um, but it's a great opportunity to be able to look at what others perceive as um, hotspots or highlights for those areas, and some areas of improvement that need to happen as well. So with me going to the tourism conference, um, I talked with Bart Platt, who is our fairgrounds manager, and he is going to be attending this weekend the Oregon Festivals and Events Conference. And then him and I are gonna get together and collaborate on that information, what's beneficial to the chamber, what pertains more to him as the fairgrounds and event center. Um, so just know that there's networking and collaboration that's going on with some of these conferences in the area. We are gonna need to be moving towards some capital improvements. Um, if you have been in the chamber, I know you were there this morning. Um, it might feel like it's Hawaii at times, or it might be cold like a Central Oregon day. Um, even covered a few things. We're gonna need to do some improvements for the HVAC system, as well as um, duct work that needs to be done for that. And in discovering that, I also discovered we have leaks in our building as well. So just know, I'm getting us to where we need to be. Um, Energy Trust of Oregon, if any of you have met Robert, he's been within the community. He had come and done an evaluation for us on lighting that we have, and that outdated lighting. So I do have people that are coming this Thursday to upgrade portion of our lighting that we have until we can get the rest of the main lobby area with new duct work. Um, so I do have lighting that's coming. So if you're in the conference room, you won't have the lights flickering with ballasts going in and out. And I might have all four banks of lights in my office working, so we're making a lot of progress. With all of that, um, there will be a membership drive. March is my goal to do a membership drive. If you are aware right now, membership dues for annual are anywhere between eighty and three hundred and eighty-five dollars a year. We're gonna be leveling that up, offering platinum, gold, silver, bronze, and individual levels. Um, and there is going to be very clear information as to what you can get for return on your investment. And some of those things were, we've established with the golf course. We will be doing a global golf tournament in October. Um, that is a nine holes of golf, have some food banquet, um, possibly silent auction, and then return and do another nine holes as well. So just in evaluating where we are, you know, the chamber has the three parades that we cover, Fourth of July, Veterans Day, and Christmas. We do the Halloween costume contest and the window display. And we haven't had an event, a signature event, that is also a revenue stream for us, but also brings together business owners and members within the community. So that will be a perk. If you are at the platinum level, you will get a team of four for that. Um, that also includes into the advertisements in the chamber membership directory and visitor guide. We are slated next with the Madras Pioneer to get working on that. They're finishing the Fairgrounds Premium Book, and then we'll be next. So the membership drive has to take place before I can get the rest of that, but a perk for being at certain levels, you will get full page, half page, sixth of a page, um, advertisements slated for you for, for free into that with your membership. Um, banners will be displayed for the levels that you're involved in. Um, and again, we'll get these made, but you can then have a decal to advertise that you are a member of the chamber as well. So that's where those membership benefits come. So then April, end of March into April, we'll be working on that visitor guide, which is anything that happens within the community. So a membership directory, it's gonna be advertisements, it's gonna be um, map of lodging, downtown dining, all of what somebody might need to know. So that is, to me, a pinnacle of what the chamber does is having that visitor guide, because it does come out to the public in the pioneer, but then it also comes out, i- is available to people within the community, um, different areas that we have it, as well as it's a handout where we mail it to someone if they're looking for that information to move here. So, all that to say, just know I'm doing all the things right now, and I wanna know if you have any questions, any feedbacks, comment?
Question, I didn't hear you mention the community awards banquet. Is that still on your?
Yes, that is also on there too.
Else have any questions?
No questions, just comment. Love your enthusiasm. You sound very excited about this. It's just the amount of things that you've done in the short eight weeks that you've been the chamber director is just incredible. And so I'm very excited to see where you take the chamber. I think that you're on a good trajectory. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Second that, I appreciate your efforts, and I love the happy place that the chamber is becoming.
Okay, thank you. And as always, you're welcome to reach out to me. I think you all have my contact information if you ever have any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Right, thank you ma'am. All right, we are going to move on to our public hearing. This is the City of Madras Comprehensive Plan and Development Code text amendment to implement the maximum residential density standard. So at this time, I am going to open the public hearing. And then I'm going to ask if there is a declaration of conflicts of interest, so does any counselor have any actual economic conflict of interest to disclose? None being stated, we will move on to the staff report and any applicable testimony.
Thank you, Counselor. Th- this evening, we've got some surgical amendments to our comprehensive plan and development code to uh, establish a maximum density standard. This is really important because when the community development department is reviewing development proposals for master plans, or zone changes, or new development, we need to identify what the maximum density could be built on the property to assess what the impacts are to our infrastructure. Without this in our code, it's a lot more difficult to do that, and so um, it allows us to complete those analyses much easier, especially for the applicants when they need to prepare, for example, a transportation impact analysis. That's really the simple, simple uh, proposal here. I will note that um, staff asked the city attorney for an opinion as to whether we were to issue a measure fifty-six notice. That is a notice that's required under state law, that anytime a city or county changes a development standard, uh, changes a plan, or otherwise, that may further restrict the use of land, or potentially could reduce the value of that land as is written in statute. We need to send a notice, and so we did to all property owners that have residentially zoned property. And uh, so we fielded lots of phone calls, emails about this. We did that in abundance of caution with the guidance of our city attorney. Um, be, there is some risk associated if we didn't. So I don't know if some of our members in our audience today are here because of that notice. Uh, a lot of people have said, well, if you would've just told me what, what this is about in the notice, I probably wouldn't have come. Um, there's a prescribed template that, in statute, that we're supposed to use, and the city attorney uh, approved as well. So apologize for that confusion, but in abundance of caution and fulfilling our obligations to our state laws, we issued all of our appropriate notices for this. You have any questions?
I'm, I guess I'm just um, confused as to why it's a late item agenda, assuming that we had to meet certain notice requirements, not only to the public, and I would assume for a public hearing that a notice has to go in the paper. Is that correct?
Yes, the answer is I failed to write a staff report in time, forgot it was uh, going on this agenda. We did issue the notices um, at least twenty way, twenty-one days in advance, posted on our website, as well as the measure fifty-six notice.
So our legal notices were met?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your staff report then?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, with the conclusion of the staff, staff report, we will move to public testimony. Does anybody in the audience want to make public testimony on this subject? Okay, with none being said, are there any additional staff comments that you would like to make?
At this time.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, now we are open to um, deliberation. Does any counselors have any comments or questions? Okay, with that being said, I don't see that I'm closing the public hearing?
Yeah, you'll wanna close it. You can just say, the hearing's closed.
But you're not looking for any motion at this time, correct?
No, you, you would literally need to say the hearing's closed, and then whatever formal action the council would like to take this evening, you would do that through your standard procedure.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing then on this subject, and then um, I would entertain a motion from counsel.
I make a motion, whoops, actually, hang on. I got it right here. Started reading from my computer, sorry. I ma- I make a motion, I move that the city council to approve the proposed comprehensive plan and development code text amendments to implement the maximum residential density standard, and direct staff to prepare the necessary adopting ordinances for council consideration.
Second.
Moved in second and, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. With that being said, we are going to move on to regular agenda. Item number one, Shelter Services Center operating lease and agreement. Jeff?
Yes, thank you. So before you is the final uh, version of the operating agreement and lease agreement for the Shelter Services Center. Just to uh, give you guys a little bit of information, that the Jefferson County Faith-Based Network, I have to do that slow because it tongues ties me every time. Um, they approved this agreement at their last board meeting, and so uh, everything's good. They're operating, and all we need to do is approve, and then we're off to the races, so.
We'll still communicate and have that open dialogue, make sure everything's working well for them, working well for us, correct?
Yep, uh, we do, we actually, we do that now. In fact, Tony, we're just on site the other day looking at fence needs that they need and some other items that need to occur, so we're constantly working side by side, yeah.
How often does this get reevaluated?
Oh, that's a, this is just a ten-year lease. So the intent is that they would operate all the way through the ten years, and then afterwards it transfers to them. And so that, the only reason why it was set up that way is because we're required to by funding, but we don't have a specific like, hey, we come back and review, but we can do that, yeah. I didn't think about that one.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I move that counsel approves the operating agreement and lease agreement between Jefferson County Faith-Based Network and the City of Madras.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to the Information Technology Services Agreement Extension. Nick?
Yes, uh, before you, the request to extend the current contract with Covenant Technology Solutions for IT services for six months. Uh, currently, we are soliciting for uh, that service, and we'll evaluate proposals. And so doing, I'm, we're working with a consultant to help us with that, and they're recommending a six-month extension to allow us to go through the solicitation process, selection, and then transition to the uh, n- new provider, should there be one. So uh, that is the request before you.
My understanding is this expires tomorrow. That's why we're having this conversation tonight, in the next couple days?
Yep.
Do I have any other questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the city council approve the first amendment to the Professional Services Agreement for Information Technology Services with Covenant Technology Solutions Incorporated for six months commencing on February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, and ending on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Second.
Moved in second and, are we good? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Michelle, obviously, but, okay. Move we go. Uh, item number three, Hoffman Park. Michelle, you're up. Okay, if you wanna hand that off, go ahead.
Fine, so, just definitely. I think I can handle it. Uh, so we're moving through the process of, we've acquired our grant from Oregon Parks and Rec for our Hoffman Park expansion, and uh, Greenworks PC Gil, he is the one who has been through us since the beginning of designing, giving us the concepts, uh, helping us put the grant agreement together. And so uh, we requested a uh, design cost from him to move forward with it now that we have our grant agreement. And so his cost is eighty-six thousand, I got this right, eighty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And so um, we're ready to get started, and so um, if it's acceptable to counsel, all that we need is motion to move forward, and we'll get moving.
I have a quick question. Have you figured out how you're gonna slow the traffic down? Where are those, the kids are gonna go back and forth there, other than a couple speed bumps, or is that, you feel sufficient?
So, well, not yet. But I have in plan to raise crosswalk, but if there's some other things that people are nervous about, like they want us to look at, we can also look at other ideas too. Uh, but my first stab at it is, similar to what we have on B Street, uh, to keep that slowed down is to put that raised crosswalk in there. But if we need some like additional signage, maybe one of those speed radar signs, we can do that as well.
Still on the radar, though?
What's that, yeah?
Still, okay.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the council approve the construction design contract for the Hoffman Park project with Greenworks PC in the amount of eighty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, number four, helipad access road. Michelle?
She said Michelle.
So?
I'm just kidding. So this next one and the next couple ones all kinda tie together, and it's associated with the airport. Uh, as you know, we've been phasing in our helipad over there. We've completed phase one, phase two. We were awarded a grant for phase three, and coming up on the agenda, you'll see our grant award for phase four. Well, part of the need for the helipad is, we need to build a road, a gravel road, to get over from the main airport to the helipad. And the reason why we need to have it on site is, one, standard is to have a perimeter road, so this adds to that, and two, our fuel trucks aren't licensed for the highway, so in order to get over to the helipad, I need a road to get there. And so this has, I've been in the works for a while, so we solicited quotes. JNS Construction was the low bidder. They're also the contractor who's replacing the Fado markers up there, and so uh, I don't know if they've started on the Fado markers yet, but uh, they're the low bidder, so if uh, everything looks good to you guys, or if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, we're ready to go.
What was the history regarding not starting with that gravel road between the main airport and the helipad?
Not starting it? What was the history on it?
Why didn't we initiate the helipad with building a road to it? Why did we go off the highway?
That's a great question. I don't have the history on that one. I think it was, the first phase was to establish the area, and then you would have access out to the road for people like, say, um, folks like Columbia Helicopter. They're gonna come and land there, they're gonna still come in there, and so we give them access off of there. But the other thing is getting fuel trucks over to them. Most of the time, they'll bring their fuel trucks, but when other hel- eh, helicopter um, groups don't, we need to be able to provide them fuel services, and our trucks aren't licensed, and so it was like, I'm gonna get this done. And so that's what it was. We could license them, but then we'd have the extra cost of, everybody has to have a hazmat, and then it's expensive, so.
Other questions for Jeff? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that counsel approve the contract for the construction of the helipad access road in the amount of sixty-one thousand, six hundred dollars, and authorize the public works director to ex- execute change orders up to sixty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to the COAR grant, twenty twenty-four S thirty-three dash zero 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 three apron improvements. I'm assuming Jeff?
Yep. So this core grant agreement ties into our apron improvement project that we're getting ready to start here in a few weeks. And FAA contributes, as you guys know, ninety percent for all capital improvements up there based on our master plan. And then the city is responsible for coming up with the other ten percent. What's really neat is their ODA offers a grant up to a hundred and fifty thousand to be used to be able to couple with all the AIP projects. So what this does is, instead of the city having to come up with the full ten percent, we're only coming up with thirty thousand. So instead of a hundred and eighty, we only need thirty thousand to match with our, basically, one point seven million, six million dollar project. So um, we applied for this uh, back actually, previously when Derek was here, and so they're now coming through, and we were awarded it, so.
Any have questions? With no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I move that counsel approves COAR grant agreement two zero two four dash S three-three dash zero 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 three, and authorize the public works director to sign the agreement. Second.
Moving in second and, um, just for clarification, our agenda says S thirty-three zero 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 three, and this says zero 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 four. Which one are we doing?
So we have two. You're gonna have one for the airport improvements, then the next one's for phase four of the helipad.
Okay.
Yep, we were awarded two grants.
Okay, so I have moved in second- Okay, so I have moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, we are on to that last one, the Oregon Department of Aviation Grant.
This one ties directly back to phase four of our helipad, so phase three was to pave the pad itself and phase four is to pave the, uh, staging areas that are, as part of the helipad. And we had held, held off on doing phase three because in hopes that we were going to get this grant, so we could couple them together and do all the paving all at once. And so, we're successful in getting that, and so, right now, Michelle and I are actually working on putting together the RFP and hopefully getting it out next week, so we can get this paved by June.
Questions? With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move the council accept the ODA COAR Grant Agreement two thousand twenty-four S thirty-three dash oh 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 four in the amount of eighty-five thousand, five hundred dollars for the fours, phase four of the helipad project and authorize public works director to execute the grant documents.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, now we are on to number seven, which was our approval, the lease of four vehicles, uh, Mr. Plummer.
I'll, I'll start with that one. I was planning on bringing this forward at the March twelfth meeting, but two things today occurred that changed that. One, Chief Plummer was going to be at this meeting today because we're both supposed to be in Salem at nine AM tomorrow morning. And so, um, for a CIS conference. And two is Enterprise found out yesterday that the two thousand twenty-four Ford interceptors, many of them were canceled. So they have a window, Ford does, when you want to order a police car because it has ballistic armor in the doors and a number of other things that you wouldn't see in a typical Ford Explorer. Um, that's why they call them interceptors, chase down the bad guys. So the challenge was, I was going to wait until the twelfth, put this through as a normal packet process, but I found that out today that hey, you really could wind up in a pickle if you do decide you want to move forward with these vehicles because the backlog of the twenty-fours are going to transfer to the twenty-five and you may not get a vehicle ordered. Now, why is it that we are asking council to approve brand-new police cars? Well, if you take a look at the age of the vehicles that are in the fleet right now, it's a challenge. We have two officers that are going to graduate from the academy on Friday, which we're excited to have them come back to Madras. Uh, they're going to go through a five-week FTO process and then we're going to give them a car. We want to give them a car that we know if they step on the gas is going to go somewhere. So, uh, we have cars that will reach that, but down the road, we're not so sure. Enterprise tells us that if we order a car tomorrow, if council so deems it to choose to do this, we will not see that car until November because they again have to make them through the assembly lines, takes five to six months to get that order to Ford. Ford then drops that car off to D Wireless, D Wireless then installs all, all the equipment into the vehicle. How we are planning on paying for this is we have ARPA dollars that have not been appropriated and this is a sixty-month lease and we would use the ARPA dollars to cover the expenses, um, for the first couple of years as we build up our, in, our fleet budget, fleet plan, et cetera. Because the city does have a very, very old fleet of vehicles, not just within the police department, but also in public works as well.
How much ARPA dollars do we still have unallocated?
I will have to follow up and confirm that amount, I know it's.
It's somewhere on the floor of four hundred, it's ceiling about five fifty is the number, the range I'm hearing.
Okay. And so, the proposal is using all of that for this?
No, the idea is, is for the first couple of years, we will make payments out of that fund. And then, as we see the additional revenues come in from the city through the growth that's going on in the community, we will roll this into a regular budgetary item. You will see on the, the one document, the actual cost of the vehicle. That cost reflects the twenty-one thousand dollars roughly it took, takes to, to equip the vehicle as a police car. Lights, sirens, radios, MDT stands, et cetera. And then the second piece that you will see is a document that basically, um, authorizes uh, the city to, to lease the four vehicles, and the third document is the breakdown of the, what's, what's invested as part of the twenty-one thousand with D Wireless. The average expense for the first, um, well, for sixty, sixty months is roughly, um, fifty-six thou- fifty-six hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents a month. I know this is unique ask, but I'm, the fact that we're not going to see these cars until November, if council wishes to go forward with it, we want to make sure that we are able to start replacing some of the fleet. If that time for, to delivery wasn't so long, I wouldn't be bringing to you at this time, I would have brought it for you as part of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
And if I can offer to, there's, there's a unique, a uniqueness to the manufacturing of police vehicles that is not solely Fords. Dodge, Chevy are the same way. They don't have a factory that sits around three hundred and sixty-five days a year that builds police cars. They actually allocate or change a line of production in order to put those out, and they have a window of opportunity where you apply and put in your orders. And so, they have this empty, if you will, bin. And first come, first served, and as soon as they fill that bin up, everybody else that's standing in line waits until they open it up again and they recommit that production line back to their retail cars. So that's why there's these windows of opportunities that we have to wait for, and when they close, they close. And that's kind of one of the reasons why the twenty-four builds, anybody that's still on that line that didn't make into the coffer are being pushed into the twenty-five builds, and that's not an uncommon practice. And it doesn't matter which manufacturer's building them, that's just the way they do their business for police vehicles.
Are the ARPA funds going to pay for the eleven thousand dollar down payment for each vehicle as well?
Yes.
Is that eleven thousand down payment per vehicle, or is that?
No, it's eleven thousand down payment for each vehicle, so it's forty-four thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Enterprise will not let you finance the entire car, you have to put something down.
So all in all, down payment are payments for sixty months, which include outfitting of the vehicles, if I'm reading this right, and I just skimmed through it. We'd be looking at it costing roughly around forty-seven, forty-eight, or four hundred and eighty, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in total, correct?
No, I don't think it would be that high.
Five thousand, six hundred, one dollar, sixty cents times sixty months is roughly three hundred and thirty-six thousand. Plus a forty-four thousand dollar down payment. So, excuse me, three hundred and eighty thousand.
Yes, that, yes.
Excuse me, I misspoke.
Yeah.
It's been a long day.
That's okay.
Yeah, that's the second time.
Yes, it, it is candidly ridiculous what it costs to buy a police car. And if there was a great inventory of recently-used police cars, agencies are, as the chief has explained to me, are hanging out of them longer because they are an expensive thing to replace. So you'd be really fortunate, it'd be the golden unicorn to be able to find one that's a couple of years old. So, we are trying to, um, bring everything up that can be new and reliable. And this is the best model we can do because we don't have, we don't want to make a payment using all that money.
So do you need along with, if we were to approve this tonight, do you need us to specify how much of the ARPA funds we want to use for that, since we need to I'm drawing a blank on the right term, but, uh, allocate the funds? So do you need us to specify the taller amount tonight as well?
I don't think that's necessary. Uh, we're going to, we're going to provide all that for you as part of the budget process. So, but if you want to set aside that we only want to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the ARPA dollars, then I will work with staff to make sure we allocate the remaining balance of that with general fund dollars.
I think I just wanted to be where we can feasibly do this while still, because we still have the budget to go through and conversation about some other projects that staff had brought forward in the past for how they were proposing we spend the ARPA dollars. And so, we need to have those on the table at the same time to be able to say, okay, yes, we see a need and we would prefer to spend the ARPA dollars on police vehicles, or we'd prefer to do project XYZ that staff presented before.
Correct.
So, I'm in support of this, I think that we could move forward with it. I just want to staff to keep that in mind, that there's other projects that have been brought forward, asking to use the ARPA dollars.
So if you, if you'd like, um, Counselor Slade, so we could certainly just, you could come up with a dollar figure?
I don't think we need to tonight, I think it's just for you guys to know.
Yeah, it's definitely, like I said, this normally, this is totally outside of the norm of what I would like to follow. But when I'm told that if you order it in February, you're going to get the car in November, that's really hard on the police department that is bringing out two officers on Friday out of the academy and then in May another officer, and they have two more that their positions are trying to fill for this year, uh, we want to make sure they have dependable vehicles when they hit the road.
I agree, and yes, I agree, you've mentioned it's ridiculous having to wait till November. Uh, just from my experience as a county employee, we just received notice about two vehicles that came onto the Ford lot that we ordered two years ago, and we're told two years ago that they canceled our order. So two years ago, they said, hey, we can't make this, we won't fulfill your order. So we moved on, and now they're like, hey, your vehicles are here. So, go figure. I'm, uh.
That's the way that industry works, it is unpredictable.
Right.
And I could also propose bringing an update on ARPA funds back to council at the next meeting, so we have kind of an overall picture of what you've approved for appropriation, what that balance is.
I'd just like to say, I'm totally fine with moving ahead with this, I understand there's other things that we could spend the ARPA funds on, but I think most importantly, police is one of our most important things that we have in the city, especially with all the other issues that we have, so I'm okay with the police cars taking precedence, and that's my opinion.
I concur.
All right, with that said, I will entertain a motion.
I move that council authorize the city administrator to sign lease agreements with Enterprise Fleet Management to lease four two thousand twenty-five Ford interceptor police cars.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. With that, we are moving on to the adjustment that we pulled out of the consent agenda, which is the city vouchers, if you're looking in our packet, it's page fifty-eight. So.
And I must recuse myself as I may have provided services or goods to the City of Madras.
Thank you very much, Kate.
Let me get back to that page.
If he recuses, do we still have a quorum?
You do, based on who's sitting at the dais.
Thank you very much.
Okay, before the council, um, this evening, we're, um, presenting the vouchers in the amount of one million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the month of January, two thousand twenty-four. These vouchers do include the P cards, uh, which you'll see in the detailed report that reflect US Bank. And if the council has any questions?
Anybody have any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the council approve the January two thousand twenty-four city vouchers as submitted.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that concludes our agenda, so we will move on to department reports, and let's go ahead and start with Kelly.
I only have one item for you guys, so on, printed for you, it looks like this, um, it's like a little grid spreadsheet. So, as you know, one of our projects that we've been working on has been the contract management software, so I wanted to show you this because I don't really have a clear expectation of what you guys are hoping to see from contract management, but I thought this would be a good place to start, so what I did was I took the rest of this quarter that we're in as well as the following quarters, so, and I pulled anything that has a termination date or a closed date of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, so between now and then, that would have come before council for approval, so these items, these contracts that are listed here are the things that you can anticipate will have to be coming back to council for an extension, an amendment, a new contract, whatever that may be by staff, before June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, so I just wanted to provide, like, I just intend to do this for each quarter, a quarterly update of what's coming up the following quarter.
I appreciate that very much, are there any questions for Kelly regarding this?
Okay.
Thank you very much, Michelle Jeff, do we have a summary?
That's just, yeah, how it goes. So, yeah, just a couple of quick things, uh, from the development world. We've had Sage Brook Estates, which is the one on Laux, just so you guys know, they have submitted plans for phase two. In fact, I think I have the, the plans on my desk ready to sign as soon as I get a chance. We've also had, uh, the storage unit, uh, Coon Storage, uh, moved Chuck Coon's area over there. Oh, in between Cypress and Jefferson Street where he was going to build all that, I've have his plan sitting on my desk to sign off on. Uh, we also have Grisley Estates, that has, uh, that little area over there by J Street and McTaggart, uh, closest to Willowbrook. That one's on my desk to sign off on, so there's, there's development activity coming through again, uh, it's that time of the year. Just some other projects, you know, I filled you guys in on airport projects. Uh, one of the things that, uh, Lorraine and I are working on is we're look, working on, we've, we've gotten two standard lease templates done, one for T hangars, one for ground leases, that's our, basically our lease for everybody moving forward. Um, the next thing that we're putting together is a leasing policy, and then as well, uh, we're analyzing, we're going through like the FBO proposals and analyzing where it would look like if the city were to do it versus having the FBO proposals, and I'm hoping to have kind of like a report for you guys here at the end of March. And then there are other thing that's going on is, uh, we have one tenant up there, uh, Mr. Weichen, uh, he's, uh, he had some, I don't know, disgruntlement with us over a, a hanger lease that he had. And, uh, but I'm working through it with him, and one of the things, he's an older gentleman, um, and a, uh, we actually get along great. Uh, but one of the things that he asked is that, he's fine working with me, he just, his, under his mind, he just wants to make sure that city council is okay and authorizes me to be able to work with him to move things forward, so I believed that was okay, but I will, I told Mr. Weichen, I said I would talk to you guys tonight to verify that, so then I could give him a piece of paper that says, yes, it's okay for me to work with you.
Flip from us, or what would you like?
I just, nope.
I think that's what he's asking for.
A note from the teacher.
I just, just, I like to be honest, he asked, I said I would ask, and so I'm just asking to make sure that you guys are okay with it. And if you guys are okay, then I'm good.
Should we make a motion to allow him?
You don't need to make a motion, I just need to make sure you're okay.
Now I really want to make a motion.
Then you, you, by all means, if you'd like to, you could make a motion.
You have permission from the counselors to proceed as best of your ability, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, then that was it, that was all I had, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, let's go ahead and move down to Kate, please.
Sure. Finance team's busy with budget, um, met with the directors this morning, kind of went over some of the assumptions, um, after doing some analysis on, did a little trend analysis regarding the five-year history and changes over, uh, actuals. Uh, working this week, we finished payroll and, uh, working with auditors, we have a couple of, um, CFA items, which are the federal awards to wrap up still. That's kind of the big stuff. So, yeah, and working with the team. That's it.
All right, any questions for Kate?
Do you miss the county yet?
All right, Mr. Plummer.
Uh, first of all, thank you, counsel, for the vehicles and for recognizing that they are, as a lot of people don't see them as, they're a tool, and they're a tool that we use and, and we use them hard, and some of those ponies we have out in the park are not old. And they needed, uh, they needed to be put out to pasture, so thank you for doing that. And they needed, uh, they needed to be put out to pasture. So thank you for doing that. Um, the other thing is that a couple of things are Willow Creek. I know that it's a hot topic and has been in conversation for a couple of weeks. Uh, Sergeant Webb is leading, is the tip of the spear, as you want to say, for bringing all the, um, the partners that are involved in that in order to get that lift started. There are a couple, a lot of moving parts. Um, I can't give you a date and there's the one big reason that I'll just disclose right away is that uh, Deer Ridge Correctional Institution is bringing some work crews down to help us. We can't publish that out there for a number of reasons. One, those of you who've been around correctional institutions know if you publish that out there, they'll have visitors drop stuff out there for those adults in custody to pick up they're not supposed to have. So we really don't put that out there for the safety of, uh, uh, the corrections workers and also for the ICs to take away those temptations and keep them away. So we are working that. We've got all the community part, well, Steve is trying to bring together all the community partners from outreach to medical services and mental health services because, um, as we were talking to our code enforcement officer today, I, I just offered to be cautious out there because when this starts happening, these people are going to hold on tighter to the things that are theirs and there may be a flash point. So we want to try and avoid that in all we can in order to help them move to the new, wherever it is that they need to be without engaging in, in that flash point. So just know that we are working on it. We've got a first meeting next week, bringing all those stakeholders together so that we can craft that plan and, uh, really start a serious outreach and communication to them that we are now in the countdown to when they're going to be moving. And in the process, reduce that footprint that's out there so that when we do make the big push, there's very little and it's not a surprise. Um, the other thing is, um, I want to do is, uh, like, um, Will said, we're just stoked. Friday is the graduation for two R people. Will and I are going to be there as well as Sergeant Elder. So we can, uh, support them and, uh, and recognize them for their, for their accomplishments. They've just been sending, they're required every week to send an update to their supervisors and the head of their agency as to their progress. And you can see in their communication, their excitement and, um, well, probably because they're done with eighteen weeks of what could be considered misery, but they're going to be coming back to their community and, uh, they want to be here and they want to be engaged. And then, uh, our third Mitch is scheduled for, uh, May, uh, for his graduation time. So we're looking forward to having that as well. So that's really, really kind of exciting. Um, we did hold, uh, interviews for new applicants. We interviewed seven, as I think, if you remember me reporting out. Um, we had, uh, four that we were ready to push forward into background. One, uh, we always reach out before saying, all right, you're in the next phase. Here's your letter. You still wanting us to go forward? Because it's kind of expensive to put people in background. One of them said, no, thanks. Uh, appreciate the opportunity and, uh, being able to go forward, but no. One of them's already been washed from background. So we're down to two. So we're going to start again, as always, continuing to receive those applications in and reviewing them and then moving forward because that's just the nature of the beast in law enforcement. Not everybody that applies gets to play in the pool. So that's just it. Our temporary evidence locker was received this week, which is a big boon. Uh, for those of you who know how evidence works, uh, you got evidence laid out here and you're processing it. You get a call for service. What are you going to do with your evidence? Because the evidence locker configuration we have now, once you put it in, you don't get it out. The only person that gets out is the evidence custodian. So if you're not done with it, with labeling it, you've got to wait for the evidence custodian to come back in, go around the other side, bring it back out to you. The temp lockers lets them put it in, lock it up, take the key. They come back in from their call. They can go open it up and continue processing it. So it's just not in an unsecured location. So we have that installed. It's in place. Uh, that's going to make Maria's job a whole lot easier. Instead of having to coordinate some time that she maybe is off duty to come in and let this evidence back out so they can finish it, they're able to do it and it's still secured. So that's kind of a nice thing. Our software for our evidence on cue has been uploaded to one of our, um, computers and we're getting a laptop to update it so that it can be, uh, uh, portable. So that's exciting that, uh, we're able to do that. So that configuration, that transition is starting to happen. One of the other things that don't know, it's probably slowing us down, wondering, this can't be all that hard. Well, we have to get to what's referred to by Angie, our lovable Angie. Sorry, I told you I was going to be, that we have to get a kill letter from the district attorney's office. What that means is by statute, we have to get authorization to dispose of the evidence for every piece of evidence that we take in. And there's been a delay in getting that back. So I think she's got four hundred pieces and every one of them has a, a letter to send over to the DA's office. They're not going to be happy, but they'll understand that, uh, um, we really need all of those back. So that's the other thing that's happening before we, because we don't want to enter stuff into the new on cue that is just leaving our inventory. That's kind of. And then other than that, uh, I'm working, uh, with budget, with Kate on budget and we're working on budget. So the budget's where we're at.
Thank you for that very quick report and very informative. Moving on, Mr. Nick.
Um, a couple of quick things. We had opened house yesterday on the proposed shopping cart regulations. Just for clarity, we're not moving forward on those regulations. We will be working with our retailers individually and finding solutions that work to their individual needs. Uh, I did also speak after the meeting, uh, later in the evening with, uh, the Safeway store manager and had some shorter timelines than was previously communicated to staff on implementing the new electronic technology. So cause for optimism on that. Apologize for some of the rollout on that. We can always do better. And so we've received that feedback and, and apologize if that created any difficulty for you. On Friday, we will have a walkthrough for the IT services RFP. So the interested parties, if they would like, walk through City Hall, police station, all of our other facilities in hopes that they have a good understanding of our IT needs and submit a, uh, more responsive proposal for our needs. Business organ notified me today that we are going to be awarded a sixty thousand dollar grant to update our industrial site readiness plan. We estimate that to be about a hundred thousand dollar project. Uh, the county's contributed twenty thousand. The city will contribute twenty thousand towards that. So you should anticipate, uh, that grant agreement on, uh, council agenda here in the near future. Uh, and formally authorizing city funds for that. Really see that as a key, uh, project for economic development or moving forward for economic development, the airport. I think enough's been said about code enforcement, but Marco's fitting and great and hitting the ground running much quicker, quite honestly than I thought. And it's been a real, real nice surprise. Um, finally, lastly, I'd be remiss by not noting some of our great work by Fatma. You know, I've had to divide and conquer the last couple of days and, uh, she's done an amazing job, uh, just stepping up. And, uh, I really appreciate that. Well, the last piece of good news is, uh, there's a bill in the legislature, House Bill forty-one thirty-four. Uh, it has, uh, at present time, one point four million dollars for infrastructure for housing here in Madras. And it looks like that'll be approved. So, uh, we'll know in about two weeks if we're going to get a grant directly from DAS. Won't be through the agencies that we can, uh, work with two housing developers to build needed housing in our community. So very positive.
Thank you, sir. Um, any questions for Nick? Fatma, did you want to add anything?
No, no, nothing to add. Thank you.
And Mr. Will?
Good evening. Uh, yeah, Fatma is the, uh, IT director. She is the, uh, support staff for all presentations and she also laughs at my jokes. So it's a, it's an all-around valuable asset to the city. Yes, the shopping cart discussion was rather robust. We've done a three sixty review on how we roll things out like this today. So we've come up with some new approaches to it. Um, I am working, as the chief mentioned, the camping ordinance. We are working towards enforcing the camping ordinance. We now have a shelter that is up and running. A third of their beds are being occupied. We want to encourage some additional tenants to visit. And so we will work with enforcement of it. The cargo, the Conex box to store their items that we acquired by law for thirty days is, is arriving very soon. We will then place that and start establishing that. But it is definitely an all hands on deck process to work towards enforcing the camping ordinance. Council put a lot of effort into it. We want to see to it that it comes to fruition. The, one of the reasons why the chief and I are going to the central insurance, basically the, our insurance carriers conference is our grants out there. We heard of a fifty thousand dollar grant potentially for body cams. So we're going to be spending some time trying to root that out as well as having discussions with the leadership of CIS about things that we can do better to work with them on and, and areas of focus. In addition to looking at benefits overall for the staff, uh, speaking of benefits and overall to the staff, we have, um, interviews that are going to be conducted with our consultant tomorrow and Thursday for our next HR director. And then hopefully next Wednesday, we'll be able to schedule in-person interviews. Um, unless council has a burning desire, I wasn't going to include you in those, but if you do have an interest in participating, we can certainly make arrangements to work that, um, into the schedule. So just let us know if that's something you're interested in. Lastly, I'm going to be sending out in the next week and a half, a draft of the annual strategic goals that you folks, uh, usually meet and establish. I'm taking the two retreats, combine that into one and coming up with something that hopefully was meaningful to you on that. And as part of that, I'd love to visit with each of you because believe it or not, come March one, I will be here six months. And I'd love to get your feedback on how I'm doing, areas of improvement and, uh, things that I can work on to be a better, uh, partner with all of you. So uh, with that said, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions for Will? All right. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and start with Lamar for comments. Busted on the phone.
Okay. Um, so since I'm on the airport, uh, committee, there was one thing that, um, Michelle and Jeff, I'm sorry. My, my brain stopped. Seriously. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, so, um, one of the things that Lorraine talked about was, um, the Madras Airport and a Madras Airport day. It's, um, where they'll put something together for us to show what available, what's available for opportunities at the airport. So kids, parents, families, whatever can come up there and take part of that. So whenever that comes about, I'm sure we'll get notice of that. Was there a date set for that? Oh, for June first. Okay. So make a date of that and invite your friends, tell people about it so that we, we can get some activity up there. Um, and then also Jeff was saying, and I don't know if this changed before, but the apron improvements will be done June first. So it'll be in time for the airshow, which will be great. So, um, anyways, that's what I had to report. Um, I appreciate all the hard work from all the departments. Um, I know there's a lot going on and you're doing a lot and hopefully I don't harass too many of you too, too much. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Lamar? All right, Mr. Walker.
Well, unfortunately, we didn't get a quorum at our last, um, city, uh, the tree and, uh, urban forestry and our public works meeting. So we all got to see each other for a few minutes and then left, but. So we are trying to get some themes together and a date for the tree planting and is that going to be on Arbor Day? But yeah, April twenty-sixth, they'll, we'll, hopefully we'll have some kids from some of the schools that'll come out and plant some trees and, and, uh, make some posters and have all these nice posters. It'll cover up those. Anyway, so, and I will, uh, be kinda, I don't know, let's see. Yeah, I have, and so all of you need to come to the, uh, Chutes County Fairgrounds, not this weekend, but next weekend for the sportsman show. I'm taking twenty-two boats over there and they'll be fishing and hunting and, and, uh, kids fishing ponds, all kinds of stuff. So put a plug in for that publicly. Anyway, that's all I got. Good job, staff.
All right. Thank you, Gary. All right, Gabe.
The only item I have is to let everybody know that the second meeting in March, I'm not going to be here. I'm going to go take a vacation. So I will not be in attendance for that. I know, I'm sorry. Unexcused absence because I didn't properly notify. It's on the record. Kelly, can you hear this clearly enough? Um, other than that, good work, staff. Know you guys work hard through things. I know this was probably a long week with the shopping cart, uh, event, but you guys did well. So, yeah, I know.
Thank you, sir. Um, I just had one question slash comment addressed towards Mr. Plummer and Gabe regarding the bus stop by Safeway. I am continually getting pictures of open day drinking at that spot from local business owners. I'm curious if there's any conversations being had about the bus stop or how to improve that situation.
I haven't had any follow-up from CYC since we first raised that as a concern. I will definitely follow up with them though and report back.
Okay. Let me know if you need any additional pictures because we got full-on parties going on and I know that that individual has been calling the police because I told them, don't call me, call the police department, but I just said I would bring it up. Okay. And that's what I was curious about because I'll go ahead and share those pictures with you, but I wanted to see if they were actually calling.
Is it a specific time of day? Is it just when the bus makes its routes? Because we've been watching some down here and now that the snow's being able to melt off that big pile in the parking lot, it doesn't seem to draw a lot of people waiting for the bus down there. But I'm, we're not getting calls for service over there.
Okay, I will share those pictures with you. It's more like the ten AM era.
Oh, okay. That makes sense because that's kind of down here too.
I've seen it throughout the day. Like if I swing by Safeway for some reason, any time of the day, I'm typically seeing somebody drinking. So.
All right. Uh, I will say thank you to everybody for letting me stumble through tonight. Hopefully the mayor is feeling much better. He said he would be here and then he said he did too much today. So boo for him. Otherwise, thank you very much for all of your efforts. And with that, if there's nothing else, uh, go ahead.
I have one more thing. Um, and I don't know, Mr. Plummer, this is for what it's worth. So when was it? Friday, I believe? No, Saturday. I went to Portland, right? And I have an alarm system around my office. And somebody was there making issues at the office while I was gone and I couldn't just run over there real quick and did two of them. So I sent an email to you with videos on it for reasons. But I also called dispatch and the very interesting thing happened to me. And if it happens to other people, it's probably going to be really frustrating. I kept being told, hey, we're too busy. There's too many emergencies going on. And then they'd say, okay, I'm back again. And then I, and I start saying like three or four words and, oh, I'm sorry, there's another emergency. So it was like probably, I, I don't know, it seemed like ten, fifteen minutes. And I was left on hold and finally I was like, ah, whatever. And I hung up and I sent the email to you guys just to let you know what it was because I thought, well, that's probably my best line of attack. But I wanted to report it so that it was, because you asked me to do that instead of contacting you directly and I want to go by chain of command. But for some reason that was an issue. I thought, boy, if somebody else has an issue, it wasn't an emergency, but it was something that was pressing. I didn't want to have that individual over there trying to harass the building. And so anyways, just for your information.
Now, did, was that, uh, just that communication with Frontier happened just before you sent the email? Because I need a timestamp and I'll make them pull the tape and I'll lodge the formal complaint against them because they, they have contract employees and they're about ready to renew contracts with some other contract dispatchers and they're doing a terrible job in my opinion, but.
I'm not one hundred percent sure if I sent the email for, I believe I sent, I may have sent the email first and then called them after the point or it was vice versa. And I'm not a hundred percent sure on that because I was driving across the mountain and I had bad service. And I believe that's why I sent the email first, maybe.
Okay, I can have them, I can have them pull it. Um, just know that we think we've identified the person. Uh, Yvonne, we sent it out to everybody and I think he is actually not a resident here. He's a resident in Redmond. And he visited, he visited also, uh, Primeville. So we've got a pretty good idea, we think who it is. Uh, so uh, was there any criminal activity other than he was just rooting around where he shouldn't probably have been?
Not really. He opened, uh, He opened the AC valve on the, he was messing around with the AC valve on the outdoor unit, and I couldn't tell if he was letting gas out, but that's what happens, and then I have to have the system recharged.
Sure, yeah.
And then also unplugging things on the side of the building, like the rain, what's the irrigation system.
It was nice of him to flash a big gang sign to your camera, though. Got us a good picture of his face, so.
Yeah, exactly.
That's how we were able to be able to find out who we think he is, so.
Exactly, anyways, thank you.
All right, thank you so much for everybody's efforts. I'm going to go ahead and close this meeting at seven forty-eight PM.
Recording stopped.